Good morning, welcome back. You are watching Daybreak on Citizen Television. Thank you for staying with us here on the broadcast. We welcome your contributions as well on the hashtag #Daybreak. The SMS code is 22422 at Citizen TV Kenya and at Ayub Abdikad. It will sample some of your feedback within the course of this broadcast. Irungo Haotun coming to you. It's one outcome that Kenyans are yearning for out of this entire process is political stability and the consciousness needed from the political establishment to safeguard the stability of the country. In your understanding of the analysis of Kenya's political landscape, will that forthcoming owing to the positions that we hear from both ends of the political aisle?
I think Kenyans have to remain hopeful that the two gentlemen on either side of me and their colleagues will lead this nation through this process. I think that that's the first thing that Kenyans would say to both senators and the committee as a whole. I mean, I think just coming back to Edwin's comment about courage. I think the issue is not courage, I think, as amnesty. It's just a choice of mandate. We don't focus on electoral processes. So in a sense, we leave it to the others, the ELOGs, the Africogs and so on, who do that to focus on it. We have been very concerned with the abuse of Article 37 and also the policing of the protests. We have gone on record, I think I did 15 media appearances in those two weeks that Asimio are on the streets. And we called, you know, for two things. One was for the police to facilitate the protest. And then secondly, also to our colleagues within Asimio to marshal the protest, to make sure that the possibility of looters, criminals invading their protest and essentially diluting their message was minimized. So, you know, I think that will continue to be our focus. And we are currently looking at retrospectively what happened with a view to providing advisory and recommendations to the security services and to the authorities and the executive on how to prevent this from happening again. I think coming back to the post-protest moment, what we're expecting from the committee is really policy proposals. We need to see not just a sense of hope from that committee, but also some national policy consensus on the issues that there. Coming back to the question that you've raised about, you know, should one side dictate the issues? We would argue no. Let the sides come with the issues that are important for them. I think it's important, I think as Bonnie has said, to have the committee members be independent, to lead from a position of wisdom rather than essentially parrot the views of potentially the more hardline elements within their two constituencies. And the last one really is thinking about, you know, actually two more. One is really, you know, how do we stop replaying nostalgia? The sense of the past that we like or the recurring nightmares that we have about 2022 or other processes, but really step forward from the past and think through what is a new powerful future for Kenya? And I think that can only come through propositions that are worked through the two committees. And then the last point that I wanted to make is that, you know, I think for the committee, it is important to think about how you are bringing citizens into the decision-making process. And it may not necessarily be that we need to have a standing set of rallies. Of course, those are completely enshrined in our constitution. In fact, it is rallies and public assemblies and meetings that have actually generated much that is strong and robust about this country. So we should not demonize that. But I think there are other things that could be looked at. For example, public surveys, inviting memoranda, representation. These are, you know, very few tools that can be used under Article 1 to essentially give sovereignty back to the people and give guidance to the committee so that they do not feel that they are leading without mandate or without a sense of the public will.
Okay. Senator, may I understand why you, Senator Sifuna, why did you release a statement to engage the public in a rally that's on Sunday today is a public engagement at Fungamano before even the talks begin?
Yeah, what we need to correct some things here. Number one, it is Ruto who asked for the talks. It is him who said, "We call on your leadership to put a halt to this protest and have a conversation." In his wisdom, he chose of all the issues, you know, I am a bit surprised people saying, "Oh, and one side should not dictate the issues." We are the ones with the grievance. There is a chronology of events that led us to this particular point, Irungo. These guys had no issues. They were eating lages in State House. They were, you know, they were okay. We are the ones who brought up these issues and have made clear the four issues. So we expect that if you have invited us, you have said, "Okay, you have made all this noise and you have had this protest. What are these things you wanted to discuss?" You have called me to the table to bring my grievances. It is not your grievance. You cannot tell them to also bring their issues, which issues did they have? So when we want to have this conversation, what we were looking for in the initial stages, and we say this publicly, we are looking for goodwill. We are looking for intention. You must demonstrate seriousness. We have said that there are red flags. For instance, when you insist on a purely parliamentary process and we have described to you that our parliamentary process streetjackets the talks, it will not be able to happen in the manner in which we expected to happen, then you insisting that there will be no talks outside parliament is a red flag for us. Number two, if you know that, for instance, one of the complaints, one of the grievances is that we need to maintain fidelity to political parties. At the point of election, you should respect multi-party democracy. Then even in constituting your team, you take a member of our team and put it on your team, adding insult to injury. How can I accuse you of sleeping with my wife? Then on the day we are called before the bishop to reconcile, you actually show up with her. It is ridiculous. That is the demonstration of lack of goodwill that is leading us to say, maybe these guys were not serious from the beginning. Then you tell us that out of the grievances that you've raised, we are only going to discuss one, you know? So for me, I have told Senator Haluale, the people of Nairobi, the only reason, I'm the only lawyer on that team, there's a reason. I am an expert in ugali as an end user. If you are not going to have a conversation on ugali, Sifuna has no business being on that committee. So we have said, if you understood our grievances, allow us to have a conversation about the grievances. The thing that makes us go back to the people, Haluale, is when we see statements like the ones that were being made on the grounds of State House. People telling us, "You must talk in parliament." "You cannot discuss unga." That is an issue.
Okay, but Senator.
I mean, then it means, it means, let me just finish.
Okay, just hang on, we will proceed. This entire process was meant to lead to at least stability and restore some sanity after the statement by the president and your party leader the same day on Sunday?
Yes.
And the talks were to yield outcomes that were satisfactory to the public, who is the end factor, who is the constant factor in this equation?
Correct.
The talks are here to start.
Yes.
Why then are you getting back to what you say, rallies on Sunday?
Because I have explained to you that we have seen a demonstration of a lack of seriousness, that in fact, this was just, you know, they were not serious, that they actually wanted to have a conversation. The public knows and my party leadership knows that you cannot send Sifuna on a full errand. If we are going just to sit there and drink tea and mandazi and not come up with concrete solutions to the cost of living, then there is really no point for us to have that conversation. It is those red flags that have pointed out. And Haluale says Kenyans want peace. Kenyans want food. Peace is not the absence of maandamanu, my brother. Peace is when that feeling you feel after you have had a plate of ugali and fuku, that feeling you have, Haluale, and you know what I'm talking about. That is peace. That is what Kenyans want. Let me come to my brother, Irungo. Irungo, when I talk about courage, you are a Kenyan also. You are enjoying, you don't just represent Amnesty International. You are also a Kenyan. You are a citizen of this country. You are enjoying under Article 3 to defend and protect this constitution. I expected you, you cannot, you see, some of the things that make us doubt these organizations such as you or at least your intentions is because you have created a false equivalence that if you have to speak to an issue, you have to address both of us. Why can't you as Amnesty International just point out that the police brutality is the problem with the protest? That you cannot use live rounds on unarmed civilians? That you cannot attack the media in the manner in which that we saw? You don't have to speak to me also so that you feel, you feel, I don't think you are called to be fair. You are called to be truthful. And you can just be truthful without involving the rest of us. Just be bold and say that the exercise of Article 37 is being stifled by the action of the police. And that by the action of the police, because you expect me to have marshals. I have marshals at the beginning of my protest. I walk into Kawangware, I am tear-gassed. Where do my marshals go? At what point, which eyes do you want me to use? When I'm tearing from the heavy tear gas? Which eyes do you want me to use to supervise who's running into people's shops? How am I supposed to account for that? So you, the courage I'm talking about, please, as Amnesty, and Amnesty is a big name. We know what they do internationally. Say that this is wrong, the use of police live bullets, the killing of unarmed civilians, the beating up the brutalization. Please don't compare what we do and statements by people like Kimani Chung were saying, "Go and attack people's farms." That is not Article 37.
Yes, Irungo.
So there's a lot in Edwin's comment that is rhetorical. So let me just focus in the main focus. So the first thing is sadly, five years ago when I joined Amnesty, I lost the capacity to speak publicly as a personal citizen. I voted in the election. I looked at the candidates. I have done that. I spend all my life on Article 3, 60 hours a week, right? But as Amnesty International, as the executive director, as I was introduced in this space, we have a mandate that we have to focus on. Now, perhaps you missed the two weeks of engagement in terms of media. But if you go back and just Google now, in fact, you can use your phone, Google now Amnesty's positions on the elections. Everything you have said, we have said. The use of live bullets, the use of water cannons, the indiscriminate targeting of public crowds, the scattering of the rally. We said all of that. We spoke about William Mayange. We have, anyway, so like, you know, everything you have said, we have spoken about. And we have not, we have not raised the, I guess, the failure of Asimio to manage the protests at the same level as the disruption of the protests by the executive and by the police. So let me just correct that very clearly. The second thing I think that's really important that you raise is, you know, the issue about who should be at the table and who should not be at the table.
But before you proceed, Irungo, to that point, and I'll come to you, Dr. Haluale, is the question on constitutionalism and the sacrosanct principle of good governance. When you have the police IG illegalizing protests, which is guaranteed in the constitution, and when you have violence meted against professional journalists, when you have Kenyans who died as a result of police brutality, when you have a police officer who died as a result of stoning, I mean, how do you address that cobweb scenario where you have all these fronts which seems to be complicating this debate further? What's the government's role? What's the purpose of it getting the mandate when it can't protect the lives of Kenyans, including a police officer, journalists and those whose properties are looted?
Yeah. No, no, I mean, we were very clear over that period. And I think we have a few more things to say in the coming weeks. But I think the point is that criminalizing protests, issuing unlawful orders to stop a public assembly, particularly when the organizers, assembly organizers have notified the police as required by law, is an unlawful act. In fact, if anything, it is our view that the lack of preparedness for the protests by the national police service is primarily responsible for the deaths and injuries we saw, not just of protesters, not just of third-party bystanders, but even police officers, right? And in some ways, we breathe the sigh of relief when the leadership, the solomonic moment of Raile Odinga and William Ruto simply saying, "Let us bring back the conversation. Let us bring this back to dialogue." It was a moment that was preceded by calls by probably all organized parts of society, business.
The church, civil society, diplomats.
Diplomats and so on. Now, in that context, I think we have to give this committee a chance to breathe and to think through. And as I said, create a national policy consensus on the issues that bedevil this country.
Yes, yes, Dr. Haluale, you had a point. Please proceed.
Yes, I don't know how I can do it so that I appeal to Senator Sifuna well enough. You see, you are in a boiler room of Asimio and I'm in a boiler room of Kenya Kwanzaa. We've been given an opportunity to step out of the boiler room so that we go into a safe room where we can reason together. So once we have this privilege, we should do all in our power not to be, to carry the boiler room behavior into this room. History is there to help us, namely my brother Sifuna. The First and Second World War, they did not end because of the new bombs that were then manufactured or the improvement in attack style. It ended because people talked. So you and I have been asked to step out of the boiler rooms so as to talk. Let us continue talking and giving the impression that we are up to it enough for the people in the ODM Asimio boiler room to say, then there's no need for us to go to Kamkunji for these public brothers. But the moment we support those public brothers and we are sitting on this committee, my brother, we are actually fueling the problem that we intended to solve. Finally, your first day, it was on 20th, I think? The first Monday was on 20th of March. It happened in Kenya, in Nigeria, in South Africa.
In France.
And in France.
France is every day.
Yes.
Anyway, Israel.
So, yes. So let me just give you two African examples. The South African experience and the Kenyan experience. You saw in South Africa, the leaders were there, leading the demonstrators peacefully.
Behind the police.
And the police was there.
In front.
In front.
Correct.
Ensuring that that peaceful procession was taking place. Here in Kenya, I saw with my own eyes, and I'm glad you were there. The leadership of Asimio was nowhere as our youth came to the streets and started causing destructions. The situation is so difficult, my brother, I beg you. Because you are a father and you are a leader. The situation is so complex, the issues raised, that why was the police doing A, B, C, D? The other side of the same question is, should have the police just sat there as supermarkets were destroyed in Kisumu? The question, yes, the supermarket went. The poor businessman had nothing to do with political groundstanding in the country. So the police might have been right. But again, we say they were not so right because then they were using excessive force. So you and I, I beg you, let us deliver something new instead of the usual rhetoric that we can do in all our public functions. That's not difficult.
Can I just say, yes, let me just say this very briefly, Haluale. I have been on record in public that in fact, after Ondro Borrel Odinga accepted the olive branch that was extended over Easter by Ruto, we in the Asimio coalition were given specific instructions not to inflame tensions by our pronouncements.
Yes.
We have seen people from Rigadi Gashagua to people like Ibani Chungwa making very inflammatory statements. We have chosen not to respond to them. We have said, "We will listen to the person who called us to the table." I have done everything in my power and I've explained to you why I'm going back to the people on Sunday. Because I was ready and prepared, having presented our petition in public to your side, to have a conversation on four issues. I cannot in good conscience, my brother, sit to discuss the IABC with the situation prevailing with the urban poor of Nairobi, the people who voted for me. It would be better if we had a conversation around the cost of living. Let us have conversations when these people are fed. If you are telling me and if Kimani Chungwa is to be believed, you do not have a mandate to discuss the cost of unga with me, Haluale, whether in the boiler room, the kitchen, or wherever it is we are going. Also, I would like you, in the same very vein, to accept, Haluale, that yesterday you and me and the speaker in the Senate were facing difficulty having a conversation about a matter because of the strictures of parliament. If you insist and if Kimani Chungwa is to be believed, your PG has resolved that it is only going to be in parliament. We have difficulty with that. Why don't you address these questions? If you address them, I have no reason to go back to the people. If I could be able to say on this TV, "Yes, rest easy, Sifuna will discuss the question of unga with Haluale," then I have no business going to a rally. But in the absence of that goodwill, we are looking for goodwill.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, all tenets of diplomacy said that before the talks, you can't do or make any attempts to sabotage the process or talks too early though. If you were to resume hypothetically this, this protest, say these issues are not agreed upon by the Kenya Kwanzaa, as you have pointed out now, the lack of goodwill, intention and et cetera, how long will you sustain these protests?
Well, this is what you need to understand. We are fighting a just war. I believe I am fighting a just war. There are just wars that are raging from the time of creation of this earth. There is no timelines in seeking for justice, my brother. Because for us, we are prepared. We are not the ones who called ourselves to this table. It is them who said, "We can have a conversation." For us, we had even ramped up to bi-weekly protests. There were suggestions by people like Ondro Bobabo. We know that in fact, we do them daily. We are there. This is a right that is given to us. And what we want to be clear about is that we never set out. Because if I set out and announce that tomorrow we are going to have maandamanu in Kakamega and we are going to target Walia supermarket, that's not maandamanu. That's criminal conduct. The police stood by when people were cutting away property at.
Northlands.
At Northlands. Why could they not just allow me? And Haluale, on the first day, please don't mislead the public. On the first day, the first leaders to be tear-gassed were Edwin Sifuna and my colleagues senators and members of parliament. We marched peacefully from parliament to KICC without any provocation. We were tear-gassed. What wrong had we committed? So please don't distort these facts. We are saying, without police action, this maandamanu will be peaceful. And then you can ask me as the person who has brought the maandamanu or organized it, if there is going to be any acts of hooliganism arising from the protesters that I brought on the streets, then I can have, I can be made accountable.
Okay, well noted. One final question, Sifuna, before we shift the gears and Dr. Haluale to you, because there's another important topic I want to. No one here seated here or the viewers watching this broadcast have prophetic skills as to what happens next or tomorrow. That's beyond our comprehension. Why isn't it fair you wait for the talks to kickstart before engaging the people?
Because there are no talks. We have told them, "We want to talk about unga." They are saying, "There will be no talks about unga." We want to talk about the savva. They are saying, "They can't talk about the..." So which talks are you talking about, my brother? Those are not talks.
That's as per the statement.
No, what are, can I also ask you a question? You know, you also need to be fair. What are we talking about? If he has no mandate to discuss unga with me, which talks are you sending me to?
Okay, so you are saying that they will come on the table with only the IABC aspect?
That's what they have said.
Okay.
That's what they have said. We have said, "We cannot talk about IABC before we talk about the problems of the people."
Thank you. There is another important.
I must say something.
Fair enough. I'll give you the right of reply. Go ahead.
Yes.
Before we shift our attention.
The important question Sifuna is raising is, why insist on a parliamentary process? We are insisting on a parliamentary process, not on the issues, because it is only parliament under the constitution of Kenya that is an organ created to make decisions that have the force of law. So if our talks are supposed to reside in decisions that will have force of law, that can be effected, then everything must be done to ensure that the backbone should be parliament. And as you have asked him, going back to the people, the way he's saying, he wants to go back to the people. What do you want the people to do? Sifuna, and I'm glad that you and I come from the same community. When you go back to Kakamega, you're home. When you go back to Bungoma, you're home. The people asking, will be asking you, "My son, you are unable to get a wife and your aunt went and brought you a wife, a beautiful girl. What more do you expect your aunt to do, having brought you a beautiful girl? She cannot bring you a beautiful girl and tell you where she will sleep and how you will sleep with her." The people of Nairobi have given you a beautiful girl.
Thank you, senators. Of course, yeah, the expectation is that Kenyans are awaiting the outcome of that process with which we'll be watching with bated breath and bring you whatever the outcome is. Talking about the crisis in the country in terms of the economy, counties are battling towards financial crisis. The devolved units according to the Controller of Budget are owed 92.5 billion Kenya shillings for January, February, March, according to a breakdown by the Controller of Budget in the country. Parliament on Tuesday convened for a special sitting to discuss the cost of living crisis in the country. MPs also, including the minority leader of Piondi, putting the Kenya Revenue Authority under pressure to come clean on its collection, citing under collection as part of why civil servants had delayed salary payments across the country. But debt management continues to be a concern for Kenyans with the government saying that they have inherited empty coffers as per the statement made by the deputy president Rigadi Gashagua. Irungo Haotun, isn't it concerning that there seems to be blame all over in terms of where the responsibility does lie with no clear way forward as to how to lessen the cost of living crisis in Kenya, including the prices of basic commodities that's affecting many Kenyans?
No, it is very concerning. In fact, it's alarming and I think there is no person who has a pulse that doesn't realize that we are at a point of a precipice, precipice, that word, precipice. Because in many ways, you know, it affects us not just nationally in terms of our macroeconomic statistics, but it also affects each of our homes. And particularly, it affects those people who are below the poverty line. I mean, poverty levels rose by 14% over the last four to five years. We've seen, you know, hikes in terms of taxes on cooking oil and gas. We've seen increased exercise duty on things that are everyday use for many of us, airtime and telephone services and so on. And there doesn't seem to be an end in sight. And that's the thing that is most worrying. So I think the pressure on the executive to find a formula to be able to take us out of this period needs to be maintained. The right to food is not an optional protocol in our constitution. It is essentially a constitutional obligation that the state has to progressively attain. And having so many millions of people starving, many people exiting from schools and also unable to pay hospital bills is just frightening for many of us. I think the other side of things, and this is perhaps one of the hidden conversations at the moment, is really that, you know, we are essentially managing a program that is determined primarily by our relationship with the IMF. And I think I don't see as much attention to this from the big political formations in the country, that many of the conditions that relate to, for example, privatization of state assets, layoffs in the civil service, removal of subsidies, these are not just, these are not domestic policies of the Kenya Kwanzaa administration. They are essentially dictates that are coming from the IMF in return for the stabilization funding. And I just wanted to remind, you know, there was a time, I think it was two years ago, three years ago, 200,000 Kenyans wrote and signed a petition. Yeah, to the IMF to halt loans to Kenya because the concern was that they were coming with strings that, you know, were not in our interest. But secondly, also that the use of that money was questionable. So I think, you know, the other conversation we need to have a little bit is what is the, what is the foreign hand in this conversation? And how do we as Kenyans?
The foreign hands in terms of?
In terms of the international finance institutions.
Bretton Woods.
Yeah, the Bretton Woods institutions, the Chinese government, the European government, European Union governments. They are essentially dictating economic policy at this point also. And I think one of the questions we need to ask our parliament and senate is, you know, have we lost sovereignty?
Okay, sovereignty, yes, Senator.
You know, it's very interesting. This is the first time I'm hearing. I don't know why it's Amnesty telling us these things because we have not heard from Kenya Kwanzaa, you know, the children of Mauma who don't talk to foreigners, that all this economic policy is actually being dictated upon us by the West. I would want to hear Rigadi Gashagua's take on what you were saying, that it is the Wazungu who are telling us what to do here. As a son of Mauma, he should be able to tell us. My problem with some of these issues, my brother, is that you had the chief economic advisor of Ruto here on your show and he admitted in no uncertain terms that in fact, the problem within government is profligacy and wastage. And that he has been so disgusted that there is nobody within government, including Ruto himself, who has the spine to do anything to cut the wastage that he's seen. If we do not deal with the expense side of our budget statement, then really we are doing nothing. On this question of loans, I would really like for Kenyans to be told, this loan portfolio should be laid bare for people to see because there are so many accusations being thrown around that in fact, these loans were taken by the unchecked government and so on and so forth. As I remember, some of the biggest loans on our books are to do with the SGR, are the eurobonds, which as Irungo has rightly alluded to, in fact, we made a lot of noise about this eurobond. And I remember even going as far as getting the auditor general to actually tell the country that he could not trace to actually tell the country that he could not trace a single project to which this Eurobond money went. All this time, William Ruto was a key player in that government. And yet they tell us that we are the ones who created these problems. And they have not offered any solution. In fact, what we see is an increase in government spending. We have seen hiring of officers that we do not need, chief administrative secretaries who are coming to increase the wage bill. And these are the issues we need to tackle. Because we can talk of all these things about World Bank and the others. I don't think it's the World Bank that told State House to increase its entertainment budget.
Okay.
I don't think it's the World Bank that told them to hire these CEOs who are political players in Kenya Kwanzaa who are just being given a soft landing.
There are questions as to the austerity. And one of the major IMF conditionality, Irungo, is the lessening of the GDP debt ratio from 55 to, from 60, from, that is from 55, 63 to 55. And to, in the midst of that is austerity after austerity, but I'll hold Dr. Halawale on that. Senator, you mentioned, Senator Sifuna, you mentioned the Eurobond question. That happened about nine years ago. Next year in June is when we'll be paying the money. The principal is due for June next year.
Absolutely.
For. What we have been paying overtime are the interests after every six months, of course. Failure to do this is a default, which risks the creditworthiness of Kenya at the international market. As a senator who sits, the House, which is a guardrail of the devolution, the
Absolutely.
governance, and which by extension safeguard the sovereignty of the people of the Republic of Kenya, how would you seek to address this?
That's a very interesting question. First, as the vanguard of devolution and believers in devolution, we have a big problem of the decisions to borrow being a precept of the national government. And yet, the result of that borrowing affects counties. Because if the debt is a fast charge on the consolidated fund and yet devolution comes thereafter, then county governments should have a say. In fact, we should be seeking even the concurrence of county governments before we borrow. Because a central government borrows and then we are all on the hook. And the county governments continue to starve because we are being told that we have to pay our debts first. So even in the early years of devolution, where was the involvement of county governments in the decision making as to how much borrowing is going to happen by the central government? So we would like to see a situation where the county government should be involved at the point of borrowing. They should also be allowed because we have counties that would want to create bonds for infrastructure and the other things. And yet during the years, early years of devolution, treasury. Treasury used to refuse counties the approvals that they require for them to also borrow, you know? So treasury, another thing we need to do with treasury is that the national treasury forgets that it's a national treasury and not a national government treasury. It does not exist to serve the interest of the national government. It is for the entire nation. And we need to find a way to divorce the national treasury from the central government so that it can serve the interest of everyone.
Okay. But one big concern here is about, I'll come to you, doctor. One big concern here is about what happened in 2019, when the debt was upscaled by the National Assembly. And that's against the advice of institutions, including the World Bank. Where you are lawmakers from the ODM party, certainly that house, including
All the lawmakers, all the lawmakers.
Do you pick that up with them as to why they did that? And again, comes because we are nearly there in terms of scaling. Do you seek explanations as to why they never hid it, good advice in terms of?
The explanation then was that if you did not raise the debt ceiling, we were going to stay at a default because we were not able to bridge the deficit in the budget by being able to borrow. That is the explanation that was given at that particular point in time. That we were not going to be able to finance the budget.
Okay, Senator.
But the point to be made
Yes.
is that we must deal with the expenditure side. If we are not dealing with the expenditure side, we are not dealing with the deficit. That is my, as much understanding of finances as I can demonstrate.
Okay, the big concern is that, however, economically, the problem is borrowing from poor and paying.
And even now, even now, I, let me just finish this.
Let me bring in, doctor, yes, Dr. Halawale.
Just one minute. Because the budget policy statement was brought to us
Yes.
in the House. And they are telling us that we are just about 600 billion shillings
Before we hit.
away before we hit the ceiling. At some point, you will have to bring that question to us as legislators. Because we are going to have to save the country, and that is just a fact.
Okay, yes, doctor.
I don't know where to start from. He has had the mic for so long.
Sorry.
You will have enough time as well.
We become an audience. I'm not complaining. You have raised quite a number of issues on the matter of the economy.
Yes.
We have to be honest and realistic. The challenges that we are facing today are not limited to Kenya. They are national, they are regional, continental and worldwide. Why? Because of three major players. The first one is the post-corona economic recession. It affected all economies in the world. The second one is the war and conflict in Ukraine. The only way you can take it for granted is if you are ignorant of the role the market in Ukraine plays in this country. Three are not entirely small. We have had the worldwide problem of negative climatic change. This country is emerging from one of the longest droughts. To manage this does not require politics. It requires people to work. I have heard over and over again, and I agree with Senator Sifuna in his anger about how we found a national treasury that did not have much. That does not worry me. Because, Irungo, you'll remember, in 2002, when President Kibaki took over the country, the coffers were worse than they are today.
Correct.
But Kibaki focused on a working nation.
And he never blamed the previous administration as you do.
So we have said it enough.
Yeah.
We have complained enough that the coffers were looted.
Yes.
It is time to focus on work. Once we make labour dignified, everybody will be proud to do their thing. And it has been tested worldwide, including the United States of America. It is labour, giving dignity to labour that unlocks economies. Irungo, you'll remember, every time you go to New York, you can miss an opportunity to go to the Rockefeller Center, where the icon of labour, John Rockefeller, said that he believed in the dignity of labour. And he said, he believed that the world does not owe any man a living, but it owes every man an opportunity to earn a living. This is exactly where we came from in the campaigns when we are saying to Teppeana Fasi, Kwamambooga, Kwaboda Boda, Mutumdogo, so that everybody can be proud of what they are doing.
Okay. Now. Upon which, you will proceed, I'll give you the time. Upon which a mandate was accorded to you. But there is a dichotomy between what you said
Yes.
now and what you said during the campaigns, including your party leader
Yeah.
that is, that was then deputy president.
Yes.
For example, he denied that the war in Ukraine has had effect on at the time the economic crisis that we felt as a country. And now there is an appreciation certainly by government that it's having a strain on our economic management as a country. Two, you mentioned Moe Kibaki, who had inherited, you said, even worse coffers than we are at the moment. Kibaki on a wheelchair, a very embroiled government, the first democratic after more than 24 years, more than 24 years, because that Kenya was also, senior was also the president at some point for 15 years, nearly 40 years. He never looked back and used the administration of Moe and Kenya as the punching bag. And that's what you have adopted at the moment of looking back and denying the war in Ukraine, then appreciating now. I mean, this sort of flip flopping, when does it end from Kenya's political class? And focus on the right issues. You have the mandate and address issues that are concerned to the Kenyan people.
Statements are not made by political leaders or leaders in general in isolation. When that statement and position was taken on the issue of Ukraine, it was because of the prevailing debate. The debate at that time was the issue of public debt. And we were now in the national conversation of why we thought the debts we are taking were not helpful to the country. And I'm glad Senator Sifuna has spoken to the Eurobond. The Eurobond was not taken by William Ruto. The Eurobond was taken by government. And at that time, you come from the media, you know, Ruto had become a laughing stock.
Eurobond was in 2014.
Can I? Can I? The effects of Eurobond were not on the day it was borrowed.
But you said government.
Yes, yes.
Who was the president then?
Can I?
Yes, you will finish, but just some clarity, who was the president in 2014?
The 2014, who was the president was not William Ruto.
Who was the?
It was Uhuru Kinyata.
Okay, who, when you said government, who leads government?
The president.
And who was his deputy?
And the president at that time, the president at that time moved away from the constitutional provision, which provides that the presidency is the president and the deputy president. And they brought another stranger called Handshake.
That was, there was a four-year span between 2014 and 18, doctor. Just to be clear in terms of the time.
I have some little capacity of expressing myself.
Okay.
If you just allow me.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I'll come out clear.
And also allow me to ask you questions.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So now, at this time, Ruto then became a laughing stock. In fact, the description was the stranger in his own government. So when it was rosy for them then, Ruto had to be met as stranger. But now that it looks bad, Edwin and his colleagues want to say that it was William Ruto. The problem was not 2013, 2017. The problem was 2017, 2022. Just like in the Kibaki cycle of leadership of this country, 2002 to 2007, the country was performing. But then, when our good brother then stepped in with the so-called Masumukate, he messed everything. Just in the same manner, when he stepped in into the Jubilee government, he messed it by bringing something called Handshake.
Okay, thank you, well noted.
And history will be written.
Okay. My question is, before we need to, and also wind up, because we have feedback also to which we need. Dr. Halawale, when you talk to lawmakers who are allied to the president, who expressed frustrations of a state weaponization, the shrinking space within the Jubilee party, why they formed after they walked out en masse of the Jubilee party to form the UDA party? They said because of the frustration, as you have cited.
Yes.
But one thing that has been consistent in their language politically has been the first-term administration of the Jubilee government between 2013 and 17.
Yes.
Where they created a lot of success, including electricity connectivity, expanding their own network in the country, the formation of the Jubilee party in 2016 September, when they formed to mirror what they say was then the Communist Party in China. Eurobond was in 2014.
Yes.
The handshake happened in 2018. And you deliberately overlooked what happened in 2014, when the government, then you have mentioned, because the government is led by the president, the deputy president and array of independent institutions. So I want to understand the full year discount you have made between when Eurobond was taken in 2014 and the handshake happening in March 2018. And where do you lay the blame here?
The borrowing did not stop with Eurobond. The mismanagement of public debt went on and on and on. And because a fellow legislator is here, he will tell you that debt is not supposed to be a one-man decision. In fact, the management of debt must be accompanied by a strategy that should receive approval from parliament. We give a special paper in the budget circle called the Medium Term Public Debt Management Strategy Paper. Once it is approved by parliament, then the circle goes on and on. So because of the mismanagement of that process, it was not only the Eurobond, but the other subsequent borrowings because the strategy was then set aside, then it brought us where we are. If it was a one event off,
Okay.
then one could very understand that, yes, it was the borrowing that was done in 2014.
Yes.
That would be my humble answer.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Irungo, please come in.
So I think, you know, I am a student of history. I love history, but I think it will not help us right now, except backdrop with, you know, and I am, you know, I'm not dismissing Boniface's, you know, comment. But I think the important thing is really just two things. One is, how do we displace the group thinking that has developed within the two political formations, us and them? Because even here, we still hear that as being a framework that will strangle the possibility of a national consensus coming from the committee. And, you know, I think the analogy of the wife was a good one. I think the key thing is just to empower the respective committee members to be able to do their work regardless of what everybody else is saying.
Okay.
Right? And that's the obligation that we should give those two sides of the committee. In fact, they're not even two sides of the committee, there's just one committee. Their job is to give us a clear framework on the issues that are important and that have been raised by Azimio and also, I think, are of concern to Kenya Kwanzaa and not to limit the issues on the outset. I would also argue that it's not prudent at this point to start deciding who should be on the talks. If one side chooses, you know, delegates or representatives from that side, the other side should just accept them.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you. I can give you an example about marriage counseling, that actually it is, sometimes it is actually best to bring the third party into the room because then you resolve issues. But let me come to a second point, which I think is more important.
Yeah.
The danger of continuing to rehash the nightmare of the last 10 years in terms of fiscal borrowing means that it displaces our thinking about practical proposals going forward. And that's the danger. It not only traumatizes us, but it leaves us in a space where we occupy the air with conversations about the past rather than what is present for us to do. And I think one of the things, there are three things. One is, how do we keep the society open? How do we ensure that, you know, that we do not see the recurrence of partners being thrown over balconies by their loved ones? Mothers killing their children, families hemorrhaging from medical bills. These are the real issues. And of course, UNGA. And I actually worry for my Nairobi senator.
Yes.
Because he will be called the UNGA senator if he continues using that phrase.
That's fine.
Which is great. But I think the point that he's making is that actually keep the issues on what matters to the people. Right? And that's what, that will make sure that this elite conversation actually resonates with the broader population. And the very last one is really, how do we revitalize the economy? Surely Kenya Kwanzaa and Azimio cannot be on two different sides in terms of the purpose of revitalizing the economy.
Thank you, yes, Senator.
First, Irungo, please, let us be traumatized by history because they say those who do not learn from
We are entitled.
Yes, no, no, no.
We can learn.
If you do not learn from history, you are going to make the same mistakes again. We have to remind ourselves where we've been as a country because it's a very serious culture of revisionism, which Senator Halawale has attempted to do here. And I thank you because you have reminded him of the things that they said about the question of Corona, Ukraine not being a factor in the economic doldrums that we found ourselves in in the last administration. Between 2013 and 2017, this is not history from 1950. You don't have to go back to the First World War and be traumatized. We are just talking about 2013 to 2017. My brother, every single debt that we are talking about here, this gentleman when they came into power, inherited a balanced budget. The debt was low. Within three or four years, they had multiplied our debt tenfold. These are things that Halawale must be reminded about so that they stop blaming people and shifting blame to people who had no responsibility. He even wants to situate the handshake in 2014. We must not allow him to do that. We must remind him that in 2013-17, we were told that there were co-presidents in this country. They used to wear the same ties, they used to wear matching shirts, they were co-presidents. SGR is a project of Uhuru and Ruto. The Eurobond, Uhuru and Ruto. What do you mean by government? If you can, if you can remove somebody holding a constitutional office as deputy president from government, yet you want to ascribe somebody who shook a president's hand to being part of government? These things we must not allow them to get away with. We were promised things in 2013-17, 1 million jobs for the youth every year. There was no handshake then to stop. I campaigned in 2017, as did Senator Halawale. In fact, in 2017, during that election, UNGA was an issue, Senator Halawale. Please, let's not lie to Kenyans. We can just have a conversation that is honest. And we say, yes, these are the problems we got ourselves into. The people responsible are here, they shouldn't lecture us. Let them find solutions to these problems.
Thank you, Senator.
Sorry, I must.
No, we also have feedback.
If I don't?
Yes, I will give you the time.
No, 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 if I don't, I will die. Look.
Go on.
I have been beaten by both yourself
Yes.
and Sifuna on the issue of Eurobond.
Correct.
Please, some members of the public think Eurobond means you go to an institution and you borrow euros.
No.
They do, no, no.
Let him finish.
Can I? They do not know what a Eurobond is, some members of the public. A Eurobond is a long-term strategy whereby you float a bond in a currency that is foreign. In our case, it is not Kenyan currency. It was usually, it is usually American dollars. And it is a long-term thing that takes time to mature. So the decision having been taken to do the Eurobond in 2014, it did not mean that that money became available to government in 2014, 2015. It went to the market, then it matured. When it matured, when the money arrived, these guys then refused to put that money in development projects. Instead, the money was used to wash PBI, to wash handshake, to please Akina Sifuna and so on.
Please don't let us get away with that.
We went into a bad corner as a country.
Okay, the money was utilized when it was borrowed, not when it matured.
Let's, let's, let's.
Please.
Let us not shout at each other. You just challenge me.
But don't lie, don't lie.
At the level of logic, that is the meaning of a Eurobond. Exactly, it doesn't mean anything else.
Okay.
It is not cash you pick from somewhere, Sifuna, if you don't. You need small classes.
The money, the money was utilized at the point when it was borrowed. Maturity means when repayments kick in, not when the money is given to you.
All right, wait, wait.
I'm not an expert in finance, but please don't mislead us.
It happened in 2014 from the international market. And we had the principle which is due for next year in June, when it will come, when it's due for payment. So let's take a look at the feedback. And here's what's coming up and what you're saying on Daybreak. That's the hashtag at Citizen TV Kenya and at Ayub Abdikadir. Honorable Lillian CEO says, let's be modest enough and give credit where it's due. Kenya Kwanzaa administration is working against all odds to stabilize our economy, which had taken a serious hit. Azimio members should join hands, should join hands in stabilizing our nation. Athanas Movuti one says, since Azimio chief agent has acknowledged that their campaign was disorganized and indeed Raile Udinga lost the election, they should forget about last year's election and concentrate on building the nation. We need stability for the economy to grow. Florist that number says, elections are over, please let the children of Israel be. We need to feed our children. We don't have time for mass action and property destructions. What kind of a leader advocates for violence? All we could do was vote, we lost. Bob Otienowino says, when the Supreme Court of Kenya ordered for scrutiny of at least nine ballot boxes and the bus demanded by Azimio on Kenya, results were positive, there were no discrepancies. And at this stage, servers were accessed, assessed rather, because of the process could not be done without it. Reverend Harrison underscore K says, yeah, civic education is indeed, is needed because elections are won and lost at every polling station. Kiprono Abraham one says, seven months down the line, we are still talking about servers and elections while Kenyans are anguishing in economic turmoil. If they are leaders and patriotic people, they should be thinking and working towards economic recovery. Oringe Wasso says, the state of our nation is predictably headed to an economic meltdown. The unnecessary spending by the Kenya Kwanzaa administration is the key catalyst that will grind the country to a halt. Remi Butia says, the government and the opposition have no choice but to genuinely engage in dialogue. They must impress upon their lieutenants the urgent need to seek compromise and work towards peace and reconciliation. All must promote peace and tranquility. Engineer Lazarus says, no meaningful solution will come out from the divided parliament. Bipartisan approach talks should be widened to discuss other pressing issues affecting our daily lives. Things like winner takes it all notion. Mohrin underscore K says, what are the possible causes of drastic decline in matters of the economy? Against our election, Asmongas the most expensive in the world, could they be the real cause of the current economic status? Mukufunzi H says, it's not time for supremacy battles. Those appointed to be in the bipartisan conversation should portray an act of patriotism. Kenyans are not ready to go to the 2007 way. Okay, of course, many feedback that we can't sample because of the time we have here in studio. But we appreciate your concern, your feedback, of course, here on the broadcast and you sending in through the hashtag Daybreak at Citizen TV Kenya and at Ayub Abdikadir. Allow me to thank the senators Kakamega County. Dr. Bone Halawale, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Let me use this opportunity to thank you too. But more importantly, send my condolences to families that have lost their children in one of our premier schools in Kakamega, Mukumu Girls High School, because of the mismanagement of food and water.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Irungu Haotun is the Executive Director, Amnesty International Kenya. Thank you for your time and company.
Thank you very much and thanks for the conversation, senators. My thoughts also is with the school. This is the lead story that was, that played as we came in, which is the story of, I think it's Nyabira School, where this child was brutally attacked by teachers and by administrators. May they, may he and the family get justice. And may we see an end to corporal punishment and the offenses that come under Article 29, which is freedom from torture.
Yes, Senator Sifuna.
Yeah, thank you as well. I joined my brothers who have expressed their condolences for both Mukumu Girls School and the other one. I just want to calm everybody's nerves that in fact, we in Azimio still remain committed to a genuine dialogue. And that for as long as we can see that there is a genuine intention to discuss the issues that affect Mwananchi, I will be there. But I owe it to you people to make sure that you are not being taken around in circles. If I get a whiff of dishonesty, you can count on Sifuna to say that this is not something that is going anywhere and I will, I will not be part of it.
And your time is all appreciated. The Nairobi County Senator Irungu Haotun, Amnesty International Executive Director Kenya and Dr. Bone Halawale, Senator Kakamega County. Your time is all appreciated. And to you too, for your feedback here on the broadcast, the hashtag on Twitter has been Daybreak. The SMS code is double two four double two at Citizen TV Kenya and at Ayub Abdikadir. Up next is what's cooking in the kitchen with Safin underscore Cheng. It's Ramadan though, in eight days' time, probably I will join either her or Willis. But thanks for watching and waking up with us. Good morning.